Start our study session.
Yeah.
I have item number eight, and I'm gonna call that one ready. Counselor Thompson.
Yes, Madam President, I have items nine through fifteen. Let's go through these. Chief, any?
Sure, so I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the first one is, oh, here it is.
Street addiction.
So, Joe Cecil, First Deputy Chief with Syracuse Police Department. So, number, I don't, number nine obviously is the Trauma Response Team, Street Addiction Institute. I don't know how much I can speak on that, except they're a huge resource for us. We use them constantly. I don't know if the money comes out of our account, but I think it does now. So, I don't know if you want more information on the Trauma Response Team.
No, anybody have any questions? They've been, you know, President Hudson has personal knowledge about these.
Yes.
Yeah, I do, and at this point, they're gonna be meeting to talk about using them at the different city pools and the schools, so they are a great resource with, in the community.
Yeah, that is exactly where they are valuable. We've used them at county libraries downtown and various areas where they actually, to be honest, can be more, more powerful than the police because they have a different way of interacting. They know the community and stuff like that, so they, then the pools would be, would be enormous for us because we can't staff them right now.
They need more money, but anyway.
Thank you, thank you. Number ten, Chief, is for the state fair.
Yeah, so number ten is when we send the GVTF, the Gang Line Task Force folks, out to the fairgrounds just to wander around, see what's going on, get a feel for the atmosphere out there, talk to various gang members if they do happen to run into them, and just keep things settled down out there.
Eleven through thirteen.
Sure, so eleven through thirteen, I just wanna mention the reason, maybe, I think most of you know this, but I had to relearn this, the reason that this, these, all three of these agenda items for cops cameras start with Kirk Park and that figure of 57, 80, 80 is because that was the original waiver of the RFP that we did back in 2016, and we just continued to expand on that, on that number. So, below that is where the actual cameras are gonna go. So, number eleven is for the Holly Green-James Street area. This is more money, I believe, coming in from Assemblyman Magnarelli. It's gonna be approximately six cameras on Townsend Street, six on Burnett, and six on James Street. The James Street ones are gonna be up in Eastwood, is, that's my understanding.
Can I ask you on, on the next one? When you talked about the Kirk Park, is that additional cameras?
No.
Or that's the same money we had already gotten previously from Kirk Park?
Yes, right, so back in 2016, we, when we first applied for this waiver of the RFP, it was for Kirk Park cameras. Now, we're continuing to dip back into it.
Sorry, can you list the streets one more time, Chief? It was Townsend, James?
Sure, six on Townsend, six on Burnett, and six up on James Street in the Eastwood area.
Okay, thank you.
So, number twelve is another expansion. This is gonna be Hyawatha Boulevard-Park Street area. That'll be an approximate seven cameras, not to exceed $87,000.
Nice.
And then thirteen, another camera project. This one is the money that you're seeing here, not to exceed $90,000, is actually for replacement cameras, and the locations are Skunk City, South Ave area, Midland Ave. These are areas where we've had current camera projects. The cameras have been there, they're beginning to, and get to the, to the end of their lifecycle, so this money is to start to repair them or replace them.
And before we move off cameras, one more quick question. Is there anything moving down that South Ave, Marguerite, Rockland area?
That's where, yes, absolutely. We, I believe we just recently, as recently last week, got the number, the number that we need from Assemblyman Pam Hunter's office, so that we can move forward. This may show up on your very next council or the one after that, but we do have the money, we just need the account number, and then we can move forward. It's my understanding there's enough money to run those cameras all the way from, from Glenwood right up to Onadaga, so the entire stretch of South Ave, including a couple that will go down Rockland, maybe one down Rockland. You don't need too many to see visually down Rockland, and, and one down Bissell where we're having a lot of problems. So, that'll be, that will be, that'll be a great project for us.
Can you speak to the process for the cameras in general? Cause in, the way I understand it, these are the same ones that we authorized of seeking funding for these a year ago or so? So, these are, like, the James Street ones were in that hopper and the South Ave ones, and now we're just authorizing to hire somebody to install them. So, will there be a host, will there be a suite of new sites where we're asking for permission to go get funding for?
No, right, so you're right, and we did come in front of you. What we have to do, this, years ago, they, the council asked if we'd come in front of them to ask for permission just to move forward with the project, so that's the first time. Then when we get the money, cause now, if you've given a permission to move forward, then we go after the money, usually from an assembly person. Then once we have the money, and then we come in front of you today to ask if we can install these. If you're looking for specific locations, I can get you the maps of where those are going. We already have pretty much done an analysis with trees and things like that and figured out where they need to go.
I, I think you may have even shared, well, I know you shared locations, target locations before, so I, if you have updated versions of that, that would help. And then I think it makes sense to, whenever the camera items come up, when you have locations, to include them in the background.
You bet, yeah.
So that we avoid the confusion of thinking they're different.
Yeah, makes sense, okay.
So, when are the, when are the deadlines for the, the Rockland ones that you mentioned?
The Rockland one, again, is, uh, these are, these are projects that are, we're gonna be starting on right away. The Rockland one, we just got the, what's it called, the account number from the Assemblyman's off, Assemblywoman's office. We knew the money was there months ago, but we need that account number, because with these projects, the city has to spend the money and then, and then recover it from the state. So, we needed that account number. We have that account number in our hands now, but now we have to get, come in front of you folks, get the approval to move forward on it. You could be talking, for South Ave, you may be talking two, three, maybe even four months.
Okay.
Yeah.
But those cameras are the ones included in item thirteen, right?
Yep.
No.
No, yeah.
I'm sorry, what is?
Those, the South Ave, like, Rockland through cameras are item thirteen, right?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
They're already gone through this.
It's not on here.
These are replacement ones for, for existing.
These are all replaced.
The ones that will be in front of us on the next agenda will be the ones that will be.
Yeah.
Yeah, to the extent we can always have the locations shared in the background, that would be really helpful, cause it's hard to.
Yep, you bet.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Number fourteen, Chief Mads.
Good afternoon, I'm Chief Mads from the Fire Department. Fourteen, we're requesting to be able to use third-party plan reviewers. We're overhauling our plan, plan review system to help this economic development that we're all looking for. Our main plan reviewer that we had for the last six or seven years left to go get another job, so we're fighting through the process right now, but we're looking to do this to try to speed, expedite some of these plan reviews that we're, that we're working on.
So, how many, how many plan review or site reviews do they have in the hopper? Do we know that aren't?
Probably twenty to thirty, around there, that we're working in between our permit office codes and us, so there's a conjunction of combining with the three different departments. We have about twenty or thirty that we're, we're constantly working on.
And?
And right now, we don't have a plan reviewer for the fire, for the fire side.
And how would it be that we would select a company to, in fact, do this? Cause there's multiple companies.
There's multiple companies, and we did that just so there wasn't any conflict. So, if somebody is submitting plans for the city to review that particular company, we wouldn't send our review out to them to, to review. So, we have these different places, it's just in order to have some diversity with the people that we can select. And these, these companies are companies that can do fire reviews, building code reviews, they can do pretty much everything we need to do from the permit office.
Is, is there an ordinance coming, forthcoming on this? Is there something that is, are we getting something else on this?
For this one, the ordinance isn't in your book, cause normally what, what we do is, when you have four different companies, we give you four different ordinances. What we're gonna try to do is put everything in one, so it'll encompass what you'd normally see separately for each of them. So, we will issue four separate contracts, which then the Fire Department will issue work orders under, similar to how they do the general engineering contracts. So, basically, if CNS is the company that, you know, it's, has, as Chief Mads said, has done the review earlier, like, they, they're not eligible, then it would go to one of the other three. So, it's like, they basically have people that they can issue work orders to, to, to issue those. But you will have an ordinance, I'm in the process of drafting it, and I will email that to everybody well in advance of the meeting.
Chief, am I remembering correctly that we added a position in the budget to have another reviewer?
We did. Trying to recruit for those positions is a challenge. We, we haven't gotten one response back that, we had a response back from somebody that lived in Australia. So, we're looking to get away from a fire protection engineer, we're looking to hire plan reviewers, which they could still accomplish some of our goals that we're looking for, and we're looking to make it. So, the way it's been the last six or seven years, we only had one person, so we're looking to bring in a couple extra people to have some type of bench, so when somebody's sick or somebody wants to go get another job, we can still have a continuous flow of plans that can get reviewed. And we're hoping that this third-party plan review system, we would be able to use this in a pinch, or it might be something that we might do long-term if it really works well. So, we're, we're just looking at all of our options to get these plans reviewed in a timely manner.
How does this compare to other municipalities? What do they typically do?
I'll let Jake speak on that.
Good afternoon, Jake Dishaw, Director of the Central Permit Office. I'd also just like to add, this is, right now, a short-term solution due to our staffing challenges. We have one plan reviewer out on family leave right now that does strictly commercial reviews, so that leaves only one commercial reviewer right now, and then obviously, you're aware of the, the fire engineer loss. So, this is a short-term solution to kinda get us caught up, give us some time to bring in new staff, and hopefully, we would handle that in-house. But to answer your question, Counselor, smaller municipalities that don't have the resources and staffing, like a city of our size, do send out a lot of third-party reviews, but most cities of our size are typically handling a lot of the reviews in-house with city staff.
Are you entertaining the thought of looking at the process and seeing how it goes, and possibly doing this going forward instead of hiring help?
You mean permanently having third-party available for reviews?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely not saying that, it certainly could turn into sort of a pilot as well, like, maybe during certain times of the year where we know we get, you know, larger volume of applications, maybe that's, so maybe only a couple months that we utilize that, just to kinda keep us from getting behind. We're not opposed to looking into that at all as a long-term solution. It's just, right now, we're bringing, we'd like to bring it on board, just to help us out with, with, with volume right now, to keep us afloat.
Is, is it in conflict with the union, or no?
I'll try to answer. I would say no. We're not, we're not eliminating work for any union employees. I mean, we're, we're lessening the load for sure, but, I mean, I, I think all of you know and can understand that we're, we're pretty much weeks behind on some of these reviews, and we're just trying to get ahead of this until we can bring on more staff and resources to, to handle this in-house.
Okay, thank you. Fifteen is, is Atlas. Jake, before you, before you read today, we want, uh, also currently in a, like, speaking.
Sure.
Number fifteen.
Fifteen, our lending provider, Atlas, went out of business, and we've been waiting on a state contract to be awarded since February. We've been in contact with them to try to expedite them awarding the bid to somebody, so we're, we're looking at getting on a state contract, but this, item number fifteen, we're looking for a stopgap just to continue our lending service.
Okay, Atlas closed, right?
Atlas closed down, yes.
Those are my items.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Rudd.
Thank you, Madam President, I have items sixteen through twenty. Item sixteen is our agreement with the Kraus-Marshall Business District Special Assessment, which we already had a hearing on during the budget process, so unless there's other questions, I'll call that one ready. Seventeen, I think Jake might come up. Jake, do you wanna talk about the payment processor a little bit?
Jake Dishaw, Director of the Central Permit Office. Item number seventeen, we're seeking approval to use Stripe as a payment processor, which is integrated with an online e-permit software system that we're working with called Camino, which was formed via partnership as part of the Startup in Residency STIR program, which partners startup companies with governments. The reason we're seeking this approval is because we have some challenges integrating right now with that system with Invoice Cloud as a credit card processor, and we're pretty much ready to go to roll out this solution for e-permits, for electrical and HVAC permits, for not only pulling permits, but for contractors to renew their licenses, their master licenses with the city to, to pull permits. So, the system can handle all of that, we just don't have a way for people to pay right now because there's a few challenges with integration with Camino, which is the e-permit software, and Invoice Cloud, which is the city's credit card vendor. So, we're seeking permission to use Stripe right now until we can work out that integration with Invoice Cloud.
Do you know how the rate compares to what we pay for Invoice Cloud? Like, the?
Fees to the customer? They're very comparable, they're slightly more like cents on the dollar. So, I have a document I can send you, but for permits that are $300 and over, it's only 85 cents more. As you go less in permit costs, like, lower than 300, it's, you know, anywhere from 30 cents up to that 85 cents as you go down from 300. So, most of the electrical and HVAC permits that we issue would only be impacted by that. There were only like 124 out of, I think, 1,600 last year that were over that amount of $300. So, we're, for most of the permits, we're talking about a 35 to 84 or 5 cents more. So, the, and that, that, that fee's passed along to the customer, it's nothing that the, the city is taking on.
Any other questions?
So, as you upgrade the system and you start doing all permits and other permits on there, those fees could change, cause some of those are different? I mean, what is the plan for that?
Well, the, the credit card fee is based on a 2.9% fee of the permit cost, plus a 30-cent transaction fee with Stripe. Invoice Cloud is very similar. Again, it's slightly less on the, on the dollar, but it'd be very similar. Obviously, the more the permit costs, you know, the, the higher the percentage is gonna be on that calculation, so, you know, a $5,000 permit's gonna cost more, and the percentage is more on that payment with credit card than it would be for a lesser costing permit of, you know, $500. But I think paying those fees is something that people are used to everywhere we go, paying with credit card, they're, you know, those fees are.
You're passing that along?
To the customer, correct. Yep, we would not absorb any of that as a city.
I guess I just wonder if, if we're doing a disservice not trying to get the cheapest service possible?
Well, I, I think there's two ways to look at it. The amount of time that contractors spend to drive in to City Hall Commons, fight for parking, come in, wait in a line, obtain their permit.
Oh, no, I think it's a good idea.
Get back to it, so, yeah, I, I, I don't think it's for, you know, obviously, we'll still get walk-ins, but the convenience of being able to do that 24 hours a day, seven days a week, you know, from the field, from your work truck, from your office, from your couch, is, is something that we need to do as a city and something that we need to offer.
I've been missing, but I was, has this new permit process, has there been a committee meeting to discuss, you know, what permits are, are available to be done, what the process is for upgrading the whole system and getting it all online? Has the council been apprised of that at all?
Nope.
Not formally in a committee meeting. I, I've had, had some discussions with, with counselors in, in separate meetings. I think they're aware of most of our plans that, that where we wanna be. I think it's, it's no secret that we wanna go digital and have the opportunity for all permits that come in to be able to be submitted digitally, application, payment online, plans online, but none of that is really taking off. This is really a starting point. The Camino software that would handle the HVAC and electrical permits is step one before we get into larger-scale plans coming in, in applications.
So, if this, when and if this is approved, cause it's a great idea, is there any other legislation that will need to come before the council regarding the rest of the processes that you're planning on doing to upgrade the permit office?
I would say probably yes, if we were to move forward with a system that would handle more than what we're, we were doing with the STIR project, which is specifically for HVAC and electrical, but it'd be very similar. I ask that, we'd be looking to expand that to pretty much every permit that we offer. Adrian, do you have anything else to add to that?
Hi, my name's Adriah Finch, I'm the Director of Innovation. So, as you all know, we are focusing on permitting this year. We have sent out invitations with, for all of you to talk about permits. We're welcome to, we would love to sit down with you at any point in time. We're still, right now, generating the complete list of all the initiatives that will be moving forward. Some of them may need to come before council, but that list isn't finalized, so we hope to engage you all in an ongoing dialogue about how to make this better.
Do we have any timeline for?
I wanna be done this by February.
With all permits?
Well, I mean, I want to have a plan of what we need to do when we go into budgeting season next year. So, I think we will have, going into February, we will know what are the things on our checklist that we still need to take care of, and then we'll be planning for that for the 2021 budget.
So, it obviously gets a little technical and above my intellect, but would this system be capable or have the infrastructure to handle whatever system gets designed for paying for all permits?
So, yeah, so this is, again, part of the Startup in Residence Program that we're doing. So, we had to start by scoping this relatively small, so it's starting with just electric and HVAC permits, but our hope is that we will continue to work with this company to build it out for the other types of permits as well.
So, every, every permit could go through the same system?
There are dozens of types of permits, so I don't want to say every, if it's not every, but the majority, if not every.
Yeah, the, the only thing I'll add to that is, this would be a permit management software solution that would be incorporated with digital plan review. So, hopefully, the, the intent would be for any permit that we review and issue could be sent in, applied for, paid, and submitted online without reams and reams of paper being submitted and routed manually throughout the city.
And then my last question, so, when they get into some of the, the, you know, tougher projects that do need reviews that go around to different departments, is that, do they pay for it at the beginning? Is that how it currently goes, and then it gets passed around?
Yeah, nothing would change. We would still charge a plan review fee to the applicant. Instead of routing individual plans to different departments or individuals located in different spots, it, it's almost like the Google Docs of plan review. Everybody gets to see on both ends, internally and externally, so architects, contractors, anybody on the applicant team is looking at what we're looking at as a city, all on the same page.
So, they can correct a lot of the problems that exist?
Right.
So, it doesn't have to get a phone call, somebody comes in, redo, somebody's on vacation, everything's both on, right?
Transparency and communication is the, the big takeaway with what this software, combined with digital plan review, should resolve, yes.
When's digital plan review gonna happen, or is it already happening?
It is not, we, we do not have a software markup tool or software that can handle that right now, but we're looking soon, well, within a year, hopefully.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate the information.
Can I just have one more? So, I, I got lost somewhere, I was just looking for clarification. Did you say there, so as we grow, we're gonna stick with Stripe, or?
The, the long-term goal is to hopefully have Camino figure out a way to integrate with Invoice Cloud. Right now, the timeframe on doing so right now is estimated at six months or longer, and I just can't afford to, to wait any longer. We have this software ready to roll out now that we really wanna use. We've gotten pretty good feedback from our electrical and HVAC contractors that wanna use this, and that's why we're, we're kinda asking for this short-term solution with Stripe, so we can roll this out.
Okay, so the concept is that Camino is going to be able to do this in-house in six months to a year, or something like that?
Uh, well, integrate with, with Invoice Cloud and Camino, that's, that's what we're working on, yes.
Okay, so this is a temporary solution, okay.
Mr. Dishaw, sir.
Thank you, is there anybody to talk about number eighteen? Sam?
Good afternoon, counselors. My name is Sam Edelstein, and the city's chief data officer. Item eighteen is a, entering into a memorandum of understanding with Syracuse University to formalize data sharing between the city and the university, both to encourage learning and education at the university, but then also to provide benefit to the city to better understand some of the information that we collect. Questions?
Yeah, could, go ahead, I know what a question I wanna ask, I just don't know if I actually wanna say it out loud.
I'll, I'll say mine out loud. Obviously, for me, the question that comes to mind is what types of data?
So, first of all, it's completely our call, we aren't sharing everything, but nothing secure, nothing of, that would have personally identifiable information, would largely be things that are already made public or could be made public through a Freedom of Information request, just provided in a way that is easier to analyze. So, instead of in a PDF or on a piece of paper, it would be in a, in a spreadsheet.
Can you give us an example?
Sure, so, we're gonna start collecting a lot of data from streetlights, so making pieces or all of that information available so that we can better understand what's coming from there. So, that doesn't have any personally identifiable information, it's just how much is it being used, or what's on or off.
Regardless of what data we share, it's the city data. SU's gonna have access to it, but it's always, is and always will be city data. So, it's our property, not theirs.
But they would be able to utilize it for their purposes?
Yeah, so the idea is that we would, as mentioned in the, in the item, we'd have a cloud platform where we're pushing data to, to the cloud, and then we are authorizing access for students or researchers to access it, but it would sort of be a carbon copy of the data, so it's not, it's not the live data, it's not anything that, you know, could get broken if, if someone did something wrong, it's, it's a sort of a copy of that data that, that they could use.
So, is, is it safe to say that most of this is probably data relative to like infrastructure?
Yeah, mostly. I mean, there, there's a broad variety of data that, that we have in the city. Most of the time, a lot of the work that we're doing is based on infrastructure, so a lot of that would be there.
Will they have access to, or will we be sharing things like, I don't know, like code violations and things of that nature?
That could be something that we would share.
Okay.
I think it, so, it'll largely depend on what the needs of the department is, and then also where the appetites are from, from the university, but sure, that's something that could be shared. And, and again, something that anybody in the city could get access to through, through an open data portal or through a Freedom of Information request.
So, what would be the benefit for the city of Syracuse?
Yep, so, a lot of, we just have a lot of information, and we're gonna collect a lot more of it in the coming years, and so, we'll never have the staff to be able to analyze all of it and make the decisions that we need to make, so tapping into expertise and resources at the university is kind of a no-brainer to me. And so, you know, my, my assumption is that we'd be able to get better metrics on what's happening in the city, to, you know, if it's a code violation, which neighborhoods have the most code violations, building out dashboards, or, or predictive models, or a whole number of different things, or even thinking about policy, about the way that we share and understand and make decisions around the information.
And will this be at our request, or at their recommendation?
Uh, it may be a little bit of both, but we wouldn't share anything without our buy-in, obviously.
Okay. How quickly will this begin? Like, how quickly are they gonna start being able to analyze data and, you know, start doing projects?
As soon as you vote for it on Monday, then we'll be able to get started, but the intention would be in the next couple of months, we'd have things up and running and, and projects to be able to start, and I'd be happy to share any of those projects that, that we have up and running and show you the results. I think it should be exciting.
Does this type of sharing make our system of data collection more open to, like, corruption or attack?
No, so I think the benefit of this, so first of all, by moving to the cloud, it backs up information in a way that separates it from core systems, so that's an important thing to begin with. Secondly, the sharing, again, we are not allowing access into core systems, we are essentially making a carbon copy that we're then allowing very specific access to the information. So, there wouldn't be sort of a way to creep in to, to corrupt any information.
And what do you imagine the, or do we know yet the, the scope or the skies, like, how many people are we imagining working on with, how many different projects? Do we have any guestimate at this stage? How many different projects will we be working on? How much staff? How many people at SU will be working on these?
Yeah, so we do have some folks from SU here who can speak to it. The way that we've piloted some of these projects already is through a program called iConsult that comes through the School of Information Studies, and the intention is that they are sort of a feeder to understand and scope a project with us, and then to find students or researchers from across the university that could help to build those projects. So, I, I mean, there's a limit based on how much we can handle, but, I'm, you know, the hope is that it can be pretty broad.
Do, do people feel like this warrants a committee meeting, or is?
We just had one last week, talked about it for an hour. I'm pretty sure you were at it, too.
Yeah.
You were. You were.
Apparently, some of us are gonna go back and watch the livestream. I think I was here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Wow.
That's the worst.
I thought you were here. You had some great questions, by the way.
You're very challenging, Councilor. I appreciate them.
There's so many new questions.
I was away.
That was before we got hacked and shut down.
Regarding the scope, I still feel kind of like the answer was kind of broad. Do we know, like, just a ballpark? I'm wondering, is this like a six-person, is this an 80-person?
Yeah, so we're currently...
Are we doing five things, six things, 20 things?
In a current pilot that we're doing right now, we have five different projects with about 25 students.
Okay, great.
Is it possible to have the representatives from the university come up?
Yeah.
Hi, yes, my name is...
I was here at the committee meeting, so, but from my other colleagues who weren't here, would you be able to give just like a really, really, really brief snippet possibly of the information that you have?
Sure. My name is Art Thomas. I'm the Associate Dean of Academic Affairs for the School of Information Studies at Syracuse University, and I'm the faculty director for the iConsult Collaborative at Syracuse University. This is a university-wide experiential learning program for students. We engage students for being able to practice what they're learning in class on real situations with real community projects. The city is one of those. We typically have between 30 and 40 projects and about 80 to 100 students involved in any one given year, and these are with live projects with corporations, community agencies, different kinds of entities throughout the external community that the university participates in. I select the project leaders, who are in fact students, and oversee those. We have faculty mentors that help them with project management and so forth, and then they in turn work with me to select team members. We post these jobs as volunteer jobs all over the university so that we get students representing different kinds of departments and capabilities that we can apply to any given project. And we usually put five to six people on a team and allow those teams to work directly with a city client, and that particular client directs all activities and receives all deliverables directly from us.
Just a quick question on the project. Obviously, you know, depending on what the project is, I would assume it would vary on the amount of time.
Yes.
You would, you know, work on it and do it. Are you looking for more like semester-long projects or, you know, maybe a month or so? Like, ideally, what would, what types of projects and the length of period would you be giving out, at least for the cities?
Yeah, that's an excellent question, and iConsult is organized very differently in the sense that we want to bridge semesters and bridge even school years, so that we're in situations where we encourage clients to bring us chunks of things that they want done, but if those particular activities take longer than a semester, we're organized to be able to make knowledge transfer, to be able to keep that rolling. So it depends on the complexity of the project and the needs of the city in this regard, but we will be able to provide deliverables. We foster the concept of providing deliverables on frequent basis throughout, so we like to chunk things up as much as possible.
I think I'll just clarify my own stupidity, and so it was part of a committee meeting, there was an update on the Smart Cities Initiative overall, and this was a component. So it's not like we had a committee meeting explicitly on this. Yeah, we did talk about it within that committee meeting. I'm just saying.
Thank you, Professor Rudd.
Man. It wasn't even my committee meeting, it's my honor. It's like the dissonance. I'm done with that. No more questions. You want to talk about it, then we're asking. 19, ready. 20. Anybody want to talk about 20?
Yes, Joe Barry, First Assistant Corporation Counsel. This is our annual fee for support and training for our case management software, which we purchased last fiscal year. We find it's very helpful to keep track of the, all the items we're working on in the office.
Any questions?
Just out of curiosity, is this like, almost like a CRM-type of system that actually tracks cases, what's still open, what's not, what you've done, that kind of deal? Or is it more like, almost like a fine law kind of deal?
I'm not sure. It's more, it's going to be customized to how we operate. So, you know, we have our litigation cases, we have our transactional matters. The idea, it will keep track of what we do for the various departments, and then be a resource so that if we have similar cases come up, we can go back into it and not recreate the wheel.
Okay. And so again, it's more of tracking and being able to look back, is things that go to, like, what I'm basically getting at is with code violations and things like that, and housing court, is that also gonna be stored in there, and is that something that you would be able to quickly get data on, things like that, for, you know, maybe an interested councilor?
We don't have it fully up and running, but I believe that's our intent, to capture all the activities that we do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All set? Thank you. Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 21.
Good afternoon, Joe Awell, Commissioner Water. Item 21, we're asking to enter in an agreement with the Skinny Atlas Lake Association to expand their aquatic invasive species program, who would run between August and December of this year. Any questions?
Yeah, so can you just explain how this relates to water quality and what the benefit overall of invasive species?
So this aquatic invasive species program, they do boat inspection for anybody coming on to Skinny Atlas Lake to do boating. Currently, they only have three sites. With this agreement and contribution, we could expand that to six sites and increase the man-hours to almost 1,000 hours of inspection. So that would provide a benefit to the lake and the lake quality, because invasive species could have a potential harmful impact on the lake and disrupting the balance of the ecosystem.
So what do these inspection sta, these are inspection stations for the boats?
Correct.
And they, where they check the boats for any invasive species? Is that the hulls or what?
Yeah, I believe that's the intent of it, to sort of look over the boat, make sure there's no way to bring any kind of invasive species in, that they've cleaned the hulls of the boats and that type of stuff before they can enter into the lake.
Now, is this just, and again, I'm, you know, political science, not biology or zoology. This is like, what, like zebra mussels and...
Correct.
Would we check for things like, I guess, different types of algae that may...
Right.
Would that be part of, okay.
Anything that would be invasive and not native to the lake.
Is it just based on, we're gonna look it over, are we taking swaps of things, or is that...
The details of the inspections and how they're run, I'm unfamiliar with, but I think Frank Moses from SLA here can shed some light on that.
Sure. So I'll give a little background. Thanks for your time. So, I mean, historically, the zebra mussels are already in there. They came back in the late 90s. Had we known the impact they were gonna have related to harmful algal blooms that we're finding research on, it would have been, you know, considered very, very serious. So there's about 180 other invasive species in the Great Lakes space in alone that we're trying to basically have a wider, stronger safety net throughout all the launches on Skinny Atlas Lake, and looking for the city's leadership and support to do that. Part of this is to help fund the expansion, but also, we want to continue to have conversations to see how current policies could be changed. Currently in the state, it allows inspections, you know, for folks to check bill's water, but our boat stewards cannot go onto a boat, they cannot check if the anchor lines are wet, and if, they cannot, and they're not, the boats aren't mandated right now to be checked. The New York State law says they have to be clean, drained, and dry. First offense is a slap on the wrist, up to about four offenses. So there's not enough of a safety net. This expansion will allow us to cover more sites, have more hours, and some flexibility to, if there's more boats going to the DEC, if we need to have more of the stewards checking on Labor Day, this allows us to do that. One of the invasive species that we're looking at that's really of concern, that's two lakes over, is hydrilla. You may have seen reports on Cugel Lake, they're spending about $350,000 annually just in operations and management of killing the weed. They're doing that in Aurora. There's no scientific backing yet, but it is interesting to see where they are managing hydrilla, where the hydrilla's dying, that they're also experiencing harmful algal blooms. Now, that may be coincidental, I'll say that, but it does create some plausible concern of why we need to make sure that safety net is wide, strong, and it's the idea of having this ounce of prevention to prevent the pound of cure that's gonna happen.
And I don't want to...
Sure.
...put words in your mouth, but what I'm sort of gathering from this is, the state probably needs to be a little bit more supportive on legislation to address specific issues and, you know, getting on, inspecting, looking at things. But I guess my question would then be, how are they, you know, financial, are they, I mean, is this basically just an effort financially that's split between the city and the SLA, or is this something that the state stepped in and been financially supportive of, through grants and projects and things like that?
So the total budget is about $67,000 for us to operate this year. We're asking for a match of 50% for the expanded amount, which is $27,000. So that's the 13 and a half thousand for the leadership through the city of Syracuse. And the hope is in the future, as we want to get to the ideal, that the leadership of the city would also show the other municipalities, you know, that we're all in it together and we're all looking to help protect. And we want to be the city's asset, you know, for the lake as far as protecting it, too.
So I'm sorry, so then, so then the state is covering the other, so 67, so then the state is covering the other 40, or they're not financially...
Historically, there's been some amounts, I think of FLOPA funds, that have come from the state through the county.
Okay.
But beyond that, a lot of it comes from the membership and the donors from the Skinny Atlas Lake Association, covering the other amounts.
And has that traditionally just been what you, I mean, have you gone, have we gone to the state and spoken to them about, because I can't imagine that, I mean, obviously, it's not unique just to our area. Other lakes are having issues with algae blooms, and if we believe, I mean, you said there's no conclusive evidence that there's, that the different species may contribute to certain algae blooms, but, so the hydrilla is one of them that you had mentioned?
Zebra mussels is definitely showing a relationship currently. So your answer, the answer to, yes, there would be intentions to take the leverage support to get us to a larger expansion down the road, and look at sources such as the Environmental Protection Fund, which would be set up for that.
Okay.
My question was just, so you want to expand from three sites to six sites?
So last year, it was three sites that were regularly scheduled. This would allow us to go to six regularly scheduled sites, and then there's another three, such as the Skinny Atlas Country Club, the Sailing Club, and I believe another launch at a, called Winding Way, based on need, based on if there's events in town where boats are, we know boats are gonna be launching, that we want to have presence at.
So are these launch sites receptive, or what gives you the right to go in there and say, we're gonna monitor what boats launch?
So, yes, they're very receptive, and sometimes, if there's a lot of boats launching for an event, we have gotten calls from the Skinny Atlas Country Club saying, can one of your, one of your stewards be here? They are, they have all put up the signs that say boats need to be clean, drained, and dry, so they're helping with the public outreach currently as well. So there's a lot of, everybody's pretty much signed on.
There's no pushback, it just needs to be codified by the state, really?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. Item 22.
Good afternoon, councilors. John Kivland, Department of Engineering. Item number 22 is accept a lining of one sewer manhole in the 200 block of Wolf Street as a result of Anadaga County's 1-1 sewer offset requirement.
Questions? I have one. So with the manholes, what do we use now? Do we use the ones that blow off, or do we use the ones that pop up? Which ones are we using?
Right now, DPW just uses the standard manhole cover that can be flipped off.
That flop off?
Correct. I know Anadaga County on the trunk sewers has gone through and installed the explosion-proof manholes, so that when the sewer surcharges, the covers do not blow off. They raise a certain distance, and then once the surcharge has stopped, they settle back down again.
So are we looking at that? Because I came down, I ride a lot, I see a lot, yep, I do, and one of the mancovers had blew off, and it was in the middle of the street, and I'm just glad it wasn't anybody there, we had that hard rain. So are we, because I thought at one point we were exploring getting the mancovers that go back down.
Yeah, we were. Jeremy Robinson, Commissioner of Public Works. We have explored that, but the cost of those manholes are extensive, and we didn't deem that every manhole in the city would be replaced by them, but some of them, we purchased some and put them in strategic areas that we thought that was flooding, so that would be a problem, but...
So are they down near the harbor and the creek?
I have to check in that, so I don't know for sure, but we did strategically put those in around the city, because of the issue that we had a few years ago with...
Right, but a dollar saved, uh...
No, I understand. I understand.
We pay out, so...
I understand that, so if I could...
A dollar saved is a life saved.
I say it's a dollar we pay out.
Right.
Definitely. So we're looking into purchasing more this year and more over the coming years.
Okay.
But we just can't purchase all of them at the same time, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 23.
Kelly Haggerty, Division Engineer of Public Buildings. We're asking to increase CNS's General Service Agreement from $500,000 to $800,000. We had a few projects this year that have depleted the money we have left, so we need to be able to use them for emergencies that come up especially. I think one of them was for the lead project that, within BD, that was, that ate up some money.
So in relation to the budget, are we over budget for the year on this specific line?
Well, these, they don't, there's not really a line item in the budget. Each department uses their money. You guys authorize the not to exceed, so there's not, it's, each department uses their money, there's not really a line item in the budget for it.
Kelly, wasn't the lead money secured from the De Francisco grant?
It probably was, but it used this not to exceed.
The point isn't that it's necessary to the budget, but that the amount of money has been spent regardless of where the money came from? Is that...
Exactly. Yep, so the not to exceed fee for this agreement is getting close to...
It's cap?
Mm-hmm.
Do we know if any, any, I'm pretty positive, is Stephanie here today or anyone, MBD?
Uh-uh.
Okay. I feel pretty positive that that came from, so just out of curiosity, is any of the, do we know if any of the other money was not city budget money, if it came from grants or outside, you know what I mean? Like it's...
Yeah. I know we use a lot of it for like the Exa parking garage design.
Right.
So that's out of a DPW account.
So that would be...
That wasn't a grant, for sure.
Yeah, that wasn't a grant. Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Okay. 24, 25, 26.
Yeah, just one last, Kelly. Was a lot of that, what were some of the other ones? Was the Exa one the big one?
I'd say Exa was the biggest one. They do the parking garage inspections, that's the ordinance they have to do for structural inspections of all the garages. They did Burna Park Pool, which we're gonna be bidding soon, Anadaga Park, Hayawatha Lake Wall, that was a big one, too.
Did this code pay for the ceiling repair in the council office?
Yeah, I didn't want to bring that one up, but yeah.
Do we know how much that was?
There's a couple of them. I know how much it was, yeah, I think it was 17, oh, 11, 11,000. They're also doing, I just got another one for an evaluation of the whole building to make sure that doesn't happen again.
Items 24, 25, and 26 are for bonding authorization and agreement for the downtown Mill and Pay project to add an additional $242,000.
And that's just because estimates came back high?
Correct. Presently, we're working on a final design, and our final design estimate is higher, so we sought additional funds, and the state secured those funds for us.
Any Marsha Shelley connected?
We've received Marsha Shelley on the design phase, not on the construction phase yet.
Okay. 27 through 30.
Item number 27 is to amend the agreement with CNS for the Hayawatha Boulevard project to add another $24,500 to their design agreement.
So, and this is a change in scope, right?
We extended the limits of the project.
Can you describe just the difference?
The original project just focused on widening the... The original project just focused on widening the sidewalk on the bridge to accommodate the creek walk. During the design, we've since decided to extend the sidewalk from Van Rensselaer to Solar Street, and we're including Mill and Paving from, from Van Rensselaer to Solar Street as part of the project, and we're making some improvements to the bridge also. The approach slab is sun come one side, and we're going to fix that as part of the project also.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
All righty, you touched on something I wanted to know. You're going from Van Rensselaer to Solar, right? So, what I need to know is, are there any plans for Kirkpatrick and the rest of Solar to include sidewalks? Because we're building down there. We have apartments, we have people walking to the mall, and there are no sidewalks.
We have another federal aid project that's just starting in design, which is going to go from Hiawatha to Bear, and as part of that project, we would include sidewalks on Solar Street.
All the way down?
All the way to Bear.
All the way to Bear. What about Kirkpatrick?
Then there'd be a missing, there's some missing links from Kirkpatrick, then back to Bear.
And can I ask another question, maybe administration or Lock can answer that, but because they did that bill, was it included in that apartment building that they would put sidewalks there?
They included sidewalks in the, in front of their building, because per the city rules, that's their property, it's a sidewalk in front of your property, similar to everybody else. The parcel end to the north, that's owned by the State of New York. They're going to make improvements there as part of the Erie Canal Trail, which is going to cut across, so that's going to tie back into Bear. Bear Street is a state arterial, so that's under the jurisdiction of New York State DOT, so we'd have to have discussions with DOT about putting sidewalks on Bear Street.
Okay.
Items 28, 29, and 30, again, are for bonding agreement and authorization. This is for a TAP project, which is the creek walk maintenance bridge and sections of the existing creek walk between Solar, between the inner harbor and Bear Street.
You have them up in here. Questions on these?
Because it's a TAP project, it's not eligible for Marcella Shelly.
Thank you for answering my question.
Item number 31 is to authorize an agreement with Anadaga Historical Association for design surfaces for interpretive signage along the Creek Walk Phase 2 project, which is currently under construction.
What, could I, yeah, I'd like to, a little more on that. So, what, what are they doing? They're researching what, what the historical...
Historical markers along there, similar to what they did under the first creek walk. If you walk along the creek walk, there's interpretive signs. They're going to do research for, I think, approximately nine signs, intend to place along the creek walk where historical features were.
Okay. 32.
Good afternoon, councilors, Lori Ayako, DPW Fiscal Officer. 32 is for two vehicles for DPW. The two vehicles we're replacing had already gone to auction.
So, what do these vehicles do?
One vehicle is for info services, and the other vehicle is for the roofers, for building services. The info services will use that with the, it's got a lift on it, so it will help lift some of the things that they pick up in either the creek walk or some of the abandoned buildings, they need to use the lift. And the truck they have is 1998.
Do we know, do we do analysis of whether or not it makes sense to rent versus buy these?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Did we, do we do an analysis whether or not it makes sense to rent versus buy this?
That's something that we're going to task with our new fleet manager to try to corral some of the cost of our equipment. I think it makes sense to, I know in other municipalities and other states, they lease certain vehicles, like pickups and stuff like that. I don't know if that's going to be something that we do, but that's something that we should task our fleet manager, our new fleet manager.
Do we have an update on the fleet manager?
Yeah.
Fisher, we did this before, though. We did lease a...
I'm Cory Dunham, Chief Operating Officer. So, we have the jobs back complete, but we want to be a good partner, and so we're waiting to just touch base with the school district to make sure, because obviously, this fleet manager, we want them to partner with the school district and oversee kind of our entire fleet, so, but our goal is to have it posted by the end of the week.
Commissioner, I would suggest to you that, as the clerk just mentioned, the city leased vehicles at one point...
During the Bernardi administration, we tried that.
And it's fine while you're leasing for year one, two, and three, but when you have to do the payoff at the end, and you're trying to purchase or re-lease cars, you're really paying twice.
Okay.
So, it's something to keep in mind when you...
And I would just, I mean, this is the third time or so that we've had a thing come to us where we're, we don't have the fleet manager yet, so we're kind of shooting blind, so I would just say it needs to be the priority instead of having us come another time and purchase something.
Understandable.
Can we lease a flurry machine?
Not that I don't know. I think that'd be way more expensive.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Counselor Green, can I ask, I can't remember her name.
Lori.
Lori, you mentioned that the, the other vehicles were sent to auction already, were they already auctioned off?
As far as I know, they were.
Do you know the price?
I was curious. I don't.
No?
I can get that, we can get that information for you.
Okay.
For those, just those two vehicles, or everything?
Yeah, I was, I was just curious, because we're, we're going to spend, it says not to exceed $78,000, so I wanted to see what the difference would be. So, how much do we get from those two vehicles?
I can give that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. 33.
Item number 33 is a waiver of competitive bid to enter an agreement with Anadaga Earth Corps to employ local youth to furnish and install trees and plantings along the creek walk currently under construction.
How many youths?
Greg Michelle of Anadaga Earth Corps is setting up that, that program, but I would expect, I would expect there'd be a good half dozen youth involved in that, 18 to 25 years old, and be planting 75 trees along the creek walk and 70 shrubs and a year of postplanting care, watering and taking care of it.
Are you, are you in charge over at the Earth Corps?
No, no, I'm Russell Houck with the City Engineering Department, Project Manager for the Creek Walk Phase 2. Greg Michelle is in charge of Anadaga Earth Corps.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 34 is being withdrawn.
Is been withdrawn?
Yep.
Okay.
Item 35 through 39.
These are waiver of competitive bids. 35 is for the HVAC system that we have, City Hall, City Hall Commons, and DPW. Integrated Facilities is the vendor that would work on these, to monitor them. They are the authorized dealer for Delta Systems, which is the system we have in place.
Okay.
36 is also a waiver, is for Burden National. They have done all the revenue control system for all the garages, and they're proprietary to the system.
Okay.
What is, what is revenue control?
The mechanics in the garage.
Okay.
When your car comes in.
Yeah, okay.
37 is for traffic signal parts and services. This is also proprietary for some of these vendors, because the cabinets and the equipment that we've already used, we can't interchange these pieces. They have to come from the original vendor that we purchased them from.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm not an authority on this, but the more I listen, I'm trying to become more technically savvy. So, when Sam talked about integrating with the data and reading the infrastructure and all, will, will that system be able to control the traffic lights or intersections, or...
I'm not sure. We have our traffic control center.
I know about that, but since we're integrating everything, there should be a way that we can integrate all of that.
Neil Burke, Transportation Planner with DPW. So, as it relates to your question about coordinating signals and smart technology and the data, we are working to make best use of the existing infrastructure that we already have. So, we have a room down at Canal Street where we can monitor a lot of the signals. We do that, we have some staff there now, but what we want to do is bolster that effort and make sure that we are putting this technology to its best use. A lot of our signals are now on timing strings for commute times, AM rush, PM rush, but we can do more, and it's our goal to start doing more.
And you're going to do it with this technology, or are you still telling me you're going to sit in Command Central and push the buttons?
So, a lot of it will still come to the TCC, but we're looking long-term at what this agreement looks like. So, there's a lot of different options, and we're partnering with SMTC, Syracuse Metropolitan Transportation Council, to learn best practices. We visited with NICE Dot Next Door to see what they do. They have a similar system for the throughway and the interstates, so we're looking at all options here.
Okay. Thank you. All right, since we got you here, I got sort of a highly specific question about the 690 over T-Lab, the lights that are there, is that New York State, or is that us here in the city that, or is it joint? Because the timing of the lights is atrocious, and I keep getting calls about it.
I'm not sure which, I'm not sure if those are owned and operated by NICE Dot, or if those are ours, but we can look into it. Again, we want to do more with what we have, and not all of our signals are interconnected, but we're working on some expansion projects.
That's the state.
That's the state?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'll call over at the state, then I'll yell at them.
They're next door. I'll yell at them.
All right.
Thank you.
38 is also a waiver of competitive, competitive bid for Marmen Harrington, and that's to do some repairs on our snowplows, which also is proprietary.
Okay.
39 is accessories and repair parts for also our snowplows for certain vendors. The warranty on these snowplows would be voided if someone else were to work on them or put their accessories into these plows.
Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, and I just want a quick question for DPW. I know that we didn't do it, but the TIL, TIL Ave Bridge is beautiful. Move it down to Carvin Street, let's start, oh, it's beautiful. So, just keep...
We do beautiful work, too.
But no, no, but I'm saying, who did it? It was the state, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Carvin belonged to the state, too, right?
Excuse me?
Carvin Street Bridge belongs to the state, state, too, right?
Yeah.
Oh, that's phenomenal state.
Can I get a thumbs up for Brighton and Grant and...
Carvin, Carvin.
Can you put a bike lane there that just ends? The president loves those.
I just love them going over the highway. Counselor Carney.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items 40 through 48.
Good afternoon, Julie LaFave, Commissioner of Parks and Recreation. Item number 40 is to accept a memorial plaque to be placed in higher Anadaga Park in memory of a previous employee from the greenhouse.
Okay. Yep.
Item number 41 is to enter an agreement, this is a second-year agreement, with DAB resources to assist us in inventorying all of the city trees.
Okay.
42, 43, and 44 are entering into an agreement with regards to payments for instructors throughout the year at our various community centers and in the parks.
Okay. Any more questions? No? All right.
Item number 45 is to allocate funds for the tree pit program out of our capital account. Oh, did you have a question?
We skipped over 43 and 44, did we?
They were, they're all the same.
They're all for fitness.
Okay, instructors, yeah.
It's okay. Did you want to repeat 44, or are you all set on that one?
No.
Item number 46 is to allocate funds for our court improvement, court improvement programs, which resurfaces tennis courts, basketball courts, lines, various courts in the parks.
Okay.
Item 47 and 48 are related to our capital improvement program for our tree planting program.
Okay. Yep.
I have a question.
Okay.
Were you finished? Okay. I was in higher park last night, and they have, so leading down to the playground, it looks like there's new stairs.
Yes.
Are there going to be railings?
The railing has been on order for, since last fall. We expect that it will be in any time now.
Okay. Steps are beautiful, though.
Thank you, thank you. We did not expect the delay in the, in the railing, but we're aware that it's a safety hazard, but it's coming very soon for both, for both sets of steps.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And is, is, you talked about court, the court repairs?
Yes.
Is Berry Park in the pipeline for those basketball courts?
Berry Park just had something resurfaced this week, and I don't remember if it was tennis or basketball. I can get that to you, the full list.
Okay, cool. And the tree pits, is that like the FlexiPave stuff?
Yes. Yes.
You're going to go with a yes?
I have Steve Harris, who's giving me a yes.
Steve's nodding?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, those are my items, they're all ready.
Thank you, Counselor Carney. Counselor Lovejoy Grinnell.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items 49 and 50. I believe there's someone on that, thank you. On the school, that's right.
Good afternoon, Julie Ranias, Comptroller for the District. So, item number 49 is a request to amend the contract for our student transportation services with...
Could you step a little closer to the...
I apologize. So, it's a request to amend the contract with First Student, which provides our student transportation services. We need to increase that amount to $20,850,000 to accommodate the annual CPI increase, as well as to add additional routes to reduce the student walk ratio to the schools.
Any questions?
I guess one of the questions that popped up last night was relative to, are they going to track the number, obviously, they'll track the number of students that they picked up. Are they going to track this against the, the funding that comes to the schools to see if it offsets any of the...
Vis a vis the absentee rate. So, some of the, some of the rationale for this, right, is to reduce absenteeism in school.
Absolutely.
So, the question, the question is, how do you track that, and can you, can you track that in terms of a cost savings ultimately?
So, I think we look to assign a cost savings to that. We're definitely tracking the absentee rate in relationship to where those students are located with the reduction in that ratio for the mileage.
You'll be able to report that back to us next year?
We can do that, certainly. I'm sure that the Board of Education would be interested in that as well for presentation, so we can provide for both.
Thank you. Other questions?
No.
All right, are you prepared to speak about item 50 as well?
I will pass that one on to Ms. Donna Harris, our Fiscal Officer.
Good afternoon, I'm Donna Harris, Fiscal Officer at the Syracuse City School District. We're looking to increase Architchnology's JSA contract from $200,000 to $500,000. We, when they were, it was awarded last October, we since then were approved by SED to do a security project, so we felt it would be a good thing for the district to hire on Architchnology, to use them for construction management as well as design for that particular project. This project is fully funded by the Smart Schools Bond Act, but the district does have to, the district has to pay for it first, and then we will be reimbursed 100%. So, it, we felt it was best at this time to use Architchnology for those services.
Any questions? Okay, I'll call this item ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, I have items 51 through 72.
Good afternoon, Kate Awter, and the Public Art Coordinator for the city, and this is a request from the Syracuse Public Art Commission to adopt a new piece of public art into the permanent public art collection. It's called Syracuse Writers. It's a text-based public art installation by Joe Cisco from Locust Design Group, and it is proposed to be installed along a section of the city-owned wire mesh fence that is opposite Foreman Park along East Genesee Street. I know you have images, I hope you have images in your, in your packet. I hope you have images in your, in your packet. Um, does anyone have any specific questions?
Do you guys have an idea of the, um, yearly maintenance expense?
The, um, actually, the, it should be limited to the occasional, perhaps graffiti removal or sticker removal, um, and then maybe, um, perhaps a power wash on occasion, but it is, uh, this is high-quality aluminum panels, um, that I think it will actually be easier to maintain than the, than the existing mesh, uh, fence that's there now.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thanks. Uh, fifty-two. No one's here?
Chair and Honesty Deputy Mayor, Stephanie Pasquale is out. These is our, our annual, uh, renewal contracts. Uh, this one is for TNT, um, program.
And these are, this eighty thousand is just divided amongst the five sectors, or how many sectors? Eight?
Eight sectors.
Eight sectors, okay.
I don't know if you can answer it, but I just wanna ask a quick question. Maybe you can.
Okay.
When, um, TNT, was it TNT that came to the council to branch off and do their own thing? And when they did, I thought it was under the assumption that they would start working to look for their own funding.
So they do, and I can't give you specifics, but I do know that they do their own grant writing and do look for other funds. I can ask the Director of TNT to report directly what that looks like to you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Uh, item fifty-three.
Good afternoon, Councilors. Heather Lamandola is Zoning Administrator. Uh, item fifty-three is a companion piece to the previous zone change that you approved last meeting.
Could you explain for some of us that were here?
Oh, certainly. So this is the district plan that goes hand-in-hand with the zone change to, um, change the zoning on several pieces of property to Plan Development District. And the Plan Development District has a specific plan that sets forth all the parameters in which it can be developed. And the district plan is, um, illustrating that this property can be developed within eighty thousand square foot warehouse with associated parking, um, and landscaping and fencing.
Which district is this?
Great, thank you so much, Heather.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate the explanation.
I hope it helped. All right, thank you. Uh, item fifty-four. Fifty-four is, um, author, authorizing the common council to act as lead agency to evaluate the potential impact of rezoned Syracuse, our new citywide zoning update, uh, with respect to Seeker. So this is very similar to the lead grant that you, uh, did last time.
Okay. Were you guys reaching out to, um, individual councilors to kinda talk to them? Did, did that already start, Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So it's ongoing, or you guys are done with that part?
Oh, no, it's, it's ongoing, because the document is not yet finished. This does not come with a document. This is just to start initiating the process, the first step in the adoption process.
Sorry, do you wanna say something?
Just to Counselor Allen, um, the email you received, um, it was the hopes before today that Dan would have gotten that to the full council. Heather has talked to him, I've emailed him, so the full council is gonna get that specific information. That will be part of ongoing conversations through this process.
Thank you.
An apology, this might be in the back of the book, but I didn't get time. Who is doing the Seeker? Who is doing the, the study?
You are.
When you take over as lead agency, we're now, we're the big dogs.
Yes, you are in charge. Um, but we have contracted...
We're not, we're not, we're not going into the field and doing the study. Who's doing the study?
So we have contracted with, uh...
You and I, Joe.
Are we calling?
You and I, yeah.
You got your, uh, explorer's gear?
Oh, I got, I got a helmet with a little light on it. I'm ready, man.
All right, I'll pick, I'll pick up my...
Law can speak to this more if I make a mistake, but, uh, uh, Barclay Damon, um, is helping us with the Seeker process.
Barclay Damon's...
And SACPA is doing the, is helping to prepare the generic environmental assessment.
And how much, do we know what the budget is going to be for the study?
Um, I do not know. I do not know.
Okay.
We get hollered at anyway, we might as well take the full blame.
Yeah, I would be, if we could, by Monday, I would just like a, if we could have like a brief, brief, uh, just synopsis of this about, you know, um, just be curious of who's doing it, what the budget is, and what we hope to gain from the study, or can Mr. Barry speak to that? It's a legal report. Yeah, I understand.
Yes, Joe Barry from the Law Department. So, um, you might be thinking with the lead seeker, we had the, uh, fortunate ability to get a grant that helped us hire CNS to do that work. But in this matter, we're using kind of a combination of resources. As Heather mentioned, the SACPA staff filled out the full environmental assessment form, which is in, in your book attached to the ordinance, and that's really the, gonna, going to be the basis for evaluating the seeker determination going forward. So the SACPA staff will continue to do that, so that when we come back with what we anticipate will be a positive declaration, um, as we did today on the next item for the, for the lead matter, you'll have those same supporting documents. Uh, Barclay Damon is just assisting the Law Department with the, kinda the secret process in terms of how we map out, um, the upcoming public comment period, and make sure we, we don't, uh, miss any steps in that.
Okay.
So there's no real one overall budget, it's kind of a combination.
Combination. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, I'm up here, the, as I mentioned, as I mentioned, the next item, uh, fifty-four is the, um, no, fifty-six, fifty-five, I'm sorry, is the, um, positive declaration for the lead ordinance. Now, that's a follow-up to, uh, your declaration, Declaration of Lead Agency that you did in May. This is the next step, and based upon the full environmental assessment form, which is part of the package, it's the recommendation that a generic environmental impact statement be drafted, and we will, uh, staff will do that and bring it back to the council via review.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and now for items fifty-six through seventy-two. I'll just go in order.
Hi. Afternoon, Michelle Spansky, Neighborhood and Business Development.
All right, so we'll, um, I'm still holding fifty-six. Um, fifty-seven, when I look it up online, it says that this was sold in April twenty-seventeen?
Yeah, actually, I, we would, uh, like to request withdraw fifty-seven, they recently redeemed.
Okay. All right, uh, fifty-eight, we're gonna hold. There you go.
Thank you.
Fifty-nine, Counselor Just...
Hold, please.
Sixty, I'm gonna hold for now. Uh, sixty-one, you have sixty-one, sixty-two, and sixty-three.
Oh, yeah. Uh, yeah, I have to say, uh, hold for the moment.
All three of them?
Yes, please.
All right.
I'd be curious, um, Michelle, we had a constituent reach out to the council from Glencoe, that they had worked out some arrangement with the, with home headquarters or something?
Our, yeah, so our last contact was, um, approximately last week, so they were in the process of trying to get into the tax trust. I'm not sure that that's been finalized one way or the other, um, but they have been in contact with our office, so.
Okay, so, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll continue to hold until we... Oh, you did? Okay, sorry, I missed that. Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely hold it, thank you.
Okay. That was sixty-two, right? Sixty-three, you gonna hold?
Yeah, I'll hold them all for now.
Okay, sixty-four. Uh, Counselor...
Lovejoy.
Lovejoy Grinnell.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm ready on that.
Say that again?
I'm ready.
Okay. All right, uh, sixty-five, Counselor Ryan?
And in the, in Trump, can, can you, um, look at sixty-five, please? They've got a log splitter and about, uh, four trees up there that they...
Okay, so sixty-five is ready. All right, I'm gonna hold sixty-six and sixty-seven. Uh, sixty...
Sixty-eight, uh, uh, do we have any way to get ahold of them? A phone number?
We don't have any on record.
You try Water Department's phone number?
We don't have any on record.
All right.
You wanna go down to Staten Island? I'm gonna take a trip.
It's twenty-five hundred dollars.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, I'll go.
Do you have an address down in Staten Island that we're, like a place that we're sending it to? Like a, like a...
Yeah, so this is, this is coming from the tax billing address. I can get the specific address for you, if you'd like.
You can move it.
I love Staten Island. I'll go down there.
Move it.
All right, so sixty-eight is ready, sixty-nine. Sixty-nine and seventy are ready. All right, and seventy-one and seventy-two. I'm gonna hold these for now. It's the first I'm seeing these. All right, thank you, I'm all set.
Thank you, and with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.